All right, we will start with a pledge to the flag. All right.
Pledge of reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is citizen's forum this time. Any person visiting for the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. Linda, has anyone signed up?
No.
Okay, next up. There are public hearings. A public hearing is scheduled to receive report, discussion, conduct public hearing on an ordinance annexing property as requested by the owner, the Little Elm Independent School District in the ex territorial jurisdiction of Lakewood Village, Texas. So, there's a public hearing on the annexation which we're going to be considering tonight. So, this is open. Uh, Linda, has anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing on the annexation?
Eric Hancock wants to speak.
Okay, um, so if you would like to unmute him, Eric, if you're out there, you have the floor for the public hearing on the annexation. Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Okay, good evening. Eric Hancock, eight two four nine Tremont Place, Frisco, Texas, seven five oh three four. I'm one-third owner of twenty plus or minus acres surrounding the current entrance to Lakewood Village at Lake Crest Drive and heading south to four hundred feet of Lake Lewisville Lakefrontage. I'm grateful for the opportunity, um, to be able to speak with you at this public hearing regarding the voluntary annexation ordinance, uh, for the land that has historically been Little Elm ISB property in Denton County outside the town limits of Lakewood Village. So, for the record and possibly to sway your decisions here, if any portion easements, agreements, provisions, or regulations of this ordinance being accepted is in support of the removal of the current Lakewood Village entrance and its easement to our property, uh, we are against its passing. Um, uh, we're not, uh, we're, we're not saying that, uh, you know, you can, uh, close it off to the rest of the town. Uh, that's what, that's what we want, uh, when you get a new town entrance. Uh, we're saying just don't take ours out, um, and create an unconstitutional taking, uh, and extremely, uh, devalue our property, uh, by a sum of seven figures. Uh, there was nothing in the thoroughfare plan that showed Lake Crest interest, uh, entrance would be removed, nothing at all. I said this to you two months ago, and when I was done speaking, the mayor said the thoroughfare plan is nothing new, uh, it's been through multiple. Eric, 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 you're getting off track here. This is just the annexation. It's just bringing land into the city. That's all it's doing. It's an annexation to bring land into the city. That's all. So, uh, I think I had about a minute and a half left. You're not even giving that to me? It's a public hearing, Eric. It's, it's, there's give and take in a public hearing. You can talk as long as you want in a public hearing, so. How about you give me a minute and a half more? Go ahead. But you say a point. A point, it's about an annexation, Eric. It's about annexation. It has nothing to do with, nothing to do with entrances and thoroughfare plans. It has nothing to do with bringing a piece of property inside the city that's outside the city. It's about annexation, that's all. So, go ahead. Okay, so, I'm going to speak on the next one as well, but for the record, you stopped me from speaking, and, uh, you were saying it has nothing to do with it. So, if there's any portion that has easements, agreements, provisions, or anything that has to do with taking out, uh, our entrance, then we're against it. And I'm going to go ahead and speak before at the next, uh, the next agenda, okay? And I hope you don't stop me. Okay, all right. Linda, has any of you got unmuted?
I did not. You're the only person that we're supposed to speak at this public hearing, and we have requested to speak at the next.
Okay, well, we've got to, we've got to close this public hearing first.
Does that tell me what is closed? Anyone speak?
Okay, does anybody on the council want to speak? Okay, all right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion from Daryl to close the public hearing. Serena's got the second. All those in favor? Okay, so we've got, the public hearing is closed. All right, next up on the agenda is a public hearing is scheduled to provide an opportunity for persistent comment on supposed zoning change to property generally located north of Lake Crest Drive. So, this is basically the triangle area that we're going to be bringing into the city that will not be zoned tonight. This is strictly getting input into a potential rezoning of that land when it comes in. Once it comes into the city, it has to be zoned. And so, the owners are petitioning for rezoning. That petition, we have not received it yet, but we expect to receive it imminently. Um, but this is their concept plan, uh, of what they would like to rezone it to. So, so that's it. All right, so, uh, we have one person signed up, is that right, Linda?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is Mr. Hancock again. So, Eric, if you're, if you're unmuted, go ahead. Okay, hello again, Eric Hancock, eight two four nine Tremont, Frisco, seven five oh three four, eric.hancock.land@gmail.com. If anybody listening has any, um, questions for me later. One-third owner of twenty plus or minus acres surrounding the current entrance to Lakewood Village and heading south to four hundred feet of Lakefront. Grateful for the opportunity to speak. Uh, again, if any portion, whether each one agreed with provision or regulation of this, uh, uh, zoning agreement supports the removal or future removal of the current town entrance or its easement for us, we are against it and its, uh, passing. Um, I was told by two council members last week, Councilman Bushong and, uh, Daryl West, uh, that they thought that a, uh, taking, um, was just a physical taking, uh, because this would be, uh, this would hurt our property if that happened. And so, therefore, I wanted to, um, uh, to let you know that a taking, uh, is not just a physical taking, but it's also a regulatory taking. And since you've all taken the, um, oath to support the Constitution of the United States, I want to get that on record so you know. In U.S. constitutional law, uh, regulatory taking is a situation in which a government regulation limits the uses of private property to such a degree that the regulation effect, effectively deprives the property owners of economically reasonable use of value of their property to such an extent that it deprives them of utility of value of that property, even though the regulation does not formally, formally divest them of title to it. Uh, so, uh, Mark, you want me to go on, or is that enough? That's the main thing. I want you to know that we're against its passing, um, and I would extremely, uh, devalue our property, um, if you take out that entrance. So, I think I've, I've covered that, but I can go on and discuss the meeting that I had, um, but I want to stay on, on topic here, as you say, so, are you good with that? Sure. Okay, well, thank you very much, Eric. Are you saying sure you want me to go on, or sure you're good? No, there's no reason for you to go off topic. This is not a public hearing about zoning. So, it sounds like you're making a point. As long as there's nothing that will affect that entrance, then I, I don't need to go on, but if you want to, if there is, if there is, go ahead and let me know, I can go on. Okay, we're going to move on now. So, we're going to move on to the agenda, all right, we're going to move to the, basically, the, uh, oh, we got to have a crowd. Sorry, anybody else, Linda? My bad.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, Daryl has a motion to close, close the public hearing. Matt got the second, all those in favor? Okay. All right, next up, uh, let's make sure, okay, uh, public hearing is scheduled to provide an opportunity for persistent comment on the petition filed by the sanctuary regarding pit one. Okay, Linda, anyone signed up for that?
No.
No one signed up, okay. Daryl makes a motion to close the public hearing? And Eric's got the second, all those in favor? Thank you, okay, let's close that public hearing. Next up is consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda should be self-explanatory, will be enacted by one motion. All right, uh, we've got minutes, we've got, uh, five thirty is a replat. That's the Neils down here that you all know on the corner, they're merging their two lots together, so that's a simple replat.
So, I was confused by that. They're, they're two, putting their two lots together, but then the easement is going, is there?
There's an easement around the, there's an easement underground, that's where a pipe goes underground. Yeah, it goes into that pond.
That's the drainage.
It's a drainage easement on that pond, yeah.
So, we're keeping that easement, or we're, we don't?
That easement stays.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, not that it matters, because it's, it's, it's a ministerial thing, but he wants to have another structure on the, on the empty lot, and you can't put a, you can't put a workshop on the empty lot, you have to put a house on it. So, it's a, it's a marginal.
I understood, I just, I was confused by the language in it, and wanted to make sure I understood all that part, that's all.
Yeah, so that's what that replat is. Um, and then, uh, we've got a resolution there, uh, uh, killing off that pit that's never, never happened, so. All right?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, Serena's got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Daryl's got the second. All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, next up is consideration of an ordinance annexing approximately sixteen point three acres, generally identified as the triangle on the other side, um, and so, everybody knows what that is, we've talked about this for the last year or more. Um, this is huge. This is huge. The only annexation that ever happened in the town, they deannexed part of the town, so. We're going to get some back, we're going to get bigger. We're going to get Eldorado frontage, which is good for the home team. So, this is, this is a day that's going to go down in the history of the town. This is a really important day, it's a big time day in history, so I want you guys to know that. This is, this is really big, and this is culmination of a lot of anxiety over what the heck was going to be on that triangle for many years, and the fact that it's under, going to be under our control is, uh, is a major accomplishment. All right, any questions from anybody? Okay, I want to add some language to the bottom of the description, because we needed to, remember, we have to annex Eldorado too. So, the, the bit meets and bounds description is the triangle part of it. So, I'm going to add to that, the entire width and right of way of Eldorado Parkway, starting at Little Elm corporate boundary, continuing for one thousand five hundred and seventy feet southwest to the point of intersection of properties, uh, one seven seven two nine three and one seven five three nine seven, um, and that's going to be the legal description of the amount of Eldorado that we're going to take. So, I'm going to add that to the last page of the description, okay? Just so everybody knows, that will be added. Okay.
Do we have to state the legal descriptions in the motion?
Uh, just do the best you can.
I make a motion that we approve an ordinance annexing approximately sixteen point three acres, uh, that we have discussed.
So described.
So described.
Okay, all right, I have a motion. All right, Matt's got the second. All right, so we have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Outstanding, the city just got bigger. Yay! We've got to change our Wikipedia page, we're no longer a half square mile, yay! Okay, or point seven, okay, yeah, there we go. All right, excellent job! I'm happy, all right, next up, discussion of concrete roads, that's me. And so, where we're at, the project's changed in the last week, I think each day, the calendar's changed each day of the day. So, the latest is, next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they're going to finish off Cary Lane. Uh, once Cary Lane is finished, it takes eleven days for the road to cure. What used to take five is now taking eleven. So, it takes eleven days before we can put traffic on Cary to go, have Cary be finished with the concrete. So, during that eleven days, they're going to do Melody. Because now we have eleven day gaps where they can't do anything. And, uh, so that's kind of the game plan. The, uh, the pipe is in at, um, at the, the big pipes is in at the intersection there. I took pictures when they had the pipe in the middle of the street, it looked like a, you know, somebody dropped a five hundred pound bomb in the middle of the road, it was awesome, big huge hole in the, in the ground there. Um, not many issues that were working, there's a couple covert issues which we squared away, um, usual stuff, people asking about drainage, you know, I've got people asking if they can change things and, you know, give them the same answer, just wait till it's done. Wait till it's all done, and after they drive away, if there's something that, you know, we want to massage, we'll, we'll do that. But they've got to build a spec right now, and that's their warranty, and then they leave. So, we can't change on the fly, just based on the way the dirt's laying today. But, uh. Metal Lake and High Ridge, we are currently, the pipe crews should be going in to start the pipe work any day now. We've got them hung up because we have to relocate another, we have to re- relocate a water line. So, we moved it, and the inlet got moved. So, now the inlet's on top of the water lines, we got to move the water line again. So, um.
How much?
At, at High Ridge and Metal Lake, that, the Bermuda Triangle back there. But all the utilities are out of the way, Sunlink, AT&amp;T, CoServe, everybody's out of the way, it's ready to go, we just have to get the pipe crews in to do it. And we told them to go ahead and do that, just don't set the box. You can do the pipe, just don't set the box till Sam gets in there. You know, we've had some issues, um, you know, Sam's had some, some issues with some staffing, um, so we're a little behind in some of the infrastructure work on our side, but they've got plenty of road work to do, so we're not, we're not really holding them up. High Ridge is just going to wait for now. There's only enough forms to do one street, and they've made the decision to knock out Cary, starting at the opposite end from me, the far end. Uh, well, it looks good to me, I didn't, you know, I haven't walked it too closely, has anybody walked it? Have you looked in front of your house? Any, is there any cracks or anything?
No.
Have you looked at it? I mean, I haven't noticed anything, not that I'm looking closely, but, you know.
Longer cure time's probably hell.
All right, the slower it takes to go, the better, because the cracking happens when kind of, you know, it gets different, different moisture, different curing at different levels in the strata. And, um, but it's just taking longer.
Yeah, we just started driving at Cary. It's been a long time, just now.
Well, you told me that the concrete they poured at Cary Court, it's, um, we, we need like three thousand before you can drive across it. We need four thousand before you can drive down it. Well, it was like at three thousand, a couple days later, ended up ninety a day. It's only up ninety each day, so it's going to take ten more days at this rate. But to get to four thousand before we can open it up. And they want to get that open so that you can go all the way down Cary to my house to your house.
Yeah.
Um, uh, your leave out in front of, uh, in front of your houses is probably about three weeks away. We got to get all the pipe work in, we want to get that all squared away before they do that between you, before they do the intersection.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Um. I figured when you said direct to Cary, you didn't mean that.
No, it's, yeah, it's basically what they want to pour now is next to what they've already poured.
Is all that drainage done? Are all the inlets and everything in, or no, there's still?
No, none of it.
Oh.
So, there's, there's an inlet going at Bernie's. Um, and I think there's one going at Davison's. I think there's two more, two more inlets going in, and they're not there yet. Um, but, uh, I expect that pipe work to be done, done soon, but. Yeah, scheduled and on schedule, um, all right. I mean, I don't have any, any complaints, they started preparing, uh, they did that today, they were back and started putting more base down on Melody. And the, the terrible part there.
Yeah.
Uh, they did that today, they went out, I told them, look, you need to get back on that.
Most of the Melody drivings are cut too, or all of them cut.
Yeah, they're all good, they're ready to, they're ready to mill Melody. They were just waiting on getting the crews, um, on Melody, because they wanted to mill it and then put the base down right behind it. They don't want Melody to be a dirt road. They want it to go straight to base. And so, that requires like, the cement truck, or not, requires the rock trucks and the dirt trucks and the excavator and the front end loaders and the milling machine, and they're having trouble getting that conga line all in the same place at the same time right now. So, that's why they figured out eleven day curing on Cary is the perfect time for them to go wild on, on Melody. Um, but, uh, but yeah, we're, we're cruising all.
Pretty happy overall, schedule's still ahead of schedule?
Uh, it slipped a little bit because of the holidays, um, when they came back, they didn't get fired up as fast as they thought. And they had to go back and kind of proof little Cary again, because of the holidays and the rain, everybody driving on it, get kind of messed up. So, they had to come back out and proctor it again, we had to get the labs, and they had to come out and verify again it was, it was ready for concrete. But the rebar went in today, the lane rebar.
I think they laid it down, but I haven't seen them setting it up.
They put it today, they put in all those, uh, the.
On the, in, in the.
Yeah, it was the, the joints.
Oh, they did.
Yeah, oh, they're all the way down the street.
Yeah, they're all down, I came home from work, they were in.
That's all, that's all we could do.
It's pregnant alone, they're losing their contact too.
Yeah, it was windy. Okay, so, any other questions on the road? I mean, I'm pretty happy, it's chugging right along. All right, next up is a, um, a town finance update. So, what I wanted to do is I wanted to give an update on where we're at, um, because January's a pretty big month for the city. Hannah, Linda, okay, thanks. So, basically, there's, there's two things going on here, let's start with the left side. So, right now, today, uh, you can see we've got our general fund reserve, our utility fund reserve, and the MDD. So, our liquid cash right now is about eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. That's what we have now. Um, but that excludes all of our tax stuff, so that's our non-tax, non-property tax stuff. That's what we have in the bank right now. For road construction, as of we stand here today, uh, we've got two point one million in the bank, we estimate the remaining cost to be about two point. Uh, so, right now, we're looking at about a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar gap today. But, we still have that big dirt that's in our favor. Um, so, you know, it might be four hundred, we might end up adding, there might be some additions to this as, seeing things that are going on now, um, but, basically, so we've got like a four hundred thousand dollar gap, but as of today, we've got about eight fifty in the bank, so I'm not worried about that gap. And nobody should be worried. Okay, so that's phase one, right, we have two big events. One is, we got to pay off the final construction. So, we've got to make sure we got the money to do that. And the second thing on the right side of the sheet is our bond payments. So, on February one, I've got to make the, our next bond payment, which is a little over three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred twenty-three thousand dollars is our bond payment. So, right now, today, INS stands for interest and sinking, that's the debt servicing, that's the twenty cents of debt. Right now, in that account, there's a hundred fifty-eight thousand, four ninety-four in that account. In that account, we're expected to get the amount, so we've, we've collected about sixty-two percent of our tax money right now. It's still January fourteenth, a lot of people are going to pay, January thirty-first, happens every year, so, and that's legal, that's perfectly fine, so we, we've got sixty-two percent. We're probably going to get about ninety percent before it gets late, and then we'll get the other later down the road. So, you can see, we've got about eighty-two thousand outstanding, well, if you add that to the one fifty-eight we have, you got about two forty. So, we have to use our M and O money, that M and O money, we have to use that to pay the taxes, I'm sorry, to pay the, the debt. That's what we do, we transfer money out of our operating to pay the, the debt servicing, because we don't collect enough. The good thing is, right now, as we sit here today, again, we've only gotten sixty-two percent of the money, but we have three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars sitting in those two accounts. So, right now, we have enough money to make that payment, so we're good. We don't have to touch any of the reserve funds, right? So, so we're good, we still have more money to come. Now, this does include about twelve thousand from the MDD. So, one of the things the MDD did is the MDD made the interest payments on our two thousand fourteen debt. So, I went and got that money from the MDD, so they've already given us that money, and it's already been moved in, so that's already in there. The MDD is paying our interest payment on the, uh, on the fourteens, so that's good there. So, as you can tell, right now, we're good to go to make that, to make that payment, and we'll get a lot of money before the end of that. On August one, we got to make another payment, and that one's eighty-five thousand dollars. So, you make the principal payment is what you pay in January and a little bit of interest, and then in August, you pay only interest. But you can see, the four and a half million dollars you borrowed, just like your mortgage, there's a lot of interest, we're going to pay eighty-five thousand dollars in interest, whereas we're only paying five thousand dollars in interest, because we only owe about five hundred on those bonds. And that five thousand, the MDD's already given us the money for that. That make sense? Yep. So, the good news is, if you kind of put this together, we've got another eighty-two thousand coming in from debt servicing, and we've got a future payment of about eighty-five. So, that's kind of a wash. And then we've got another hundred and three thousand coming in in tax money to run the city, which we ran the city last year on about a hundred and fifty. So, we still have franchise fees, remember, we get sales tax? So, all that other money is going to make up for the fact that we're only going to end up using a hundred thousand of our operational taxes to operate the city, we're only going to use about a hundred. All that other money comes from those other buckets. But, you can see, we're in real good shape. The, the, the race really was to make sure, in a perfect world, we didn't have to tap into the reserve fund to make the bond payment. You know, if everybody delayed paying us, then we'd have to do that, because look, you got, you know, if nobody waits until the end of January, we're going to end up borrowing, you know, we, we have to move that money quicker, because, you know, it's a liquidity issue, right? So, we're in good shape, I mean, I didn't, yeah, we got eight hundred fifty-five thousand in, and by the way, those reserves, like that general fund reserve of six sixteen, we haven't touched it since August. So, since August, we've been running the city with just the money coming in, just the sales tax, the franchise fees, just that money, we've been able to run the city since August, without dipping into the reserve. So, you know, we are in really good shape, the machine is running very lean, and we're in really good shape, really good shape, okay? So, I mean, some of these numbers are big, but I'm not worried about it, I'm not worried about it at all. Okay? All right, any questions? Very good. All right, next up, we have a discussion of town hall improvements. Okay, so, uh, one of the things that we're looking at is, as you all know, um, in the developer agreement, the developer, Sam Hill, is going to give us land for a new city hall. That city hall, if we build it correctly, will probably cost a million dollars. It costs a million dollars now to build a two thousand square foot house almost, I mean, with the lumber prices. Um, my impression right now is, I don't see how we could spend a million dollars down the road rather than paying down the debt. So, I mean, if we had a windfall, I mean, if things change, you know, certainly, I'd love to have a new city hall, but I think in the priority, I think prioritizing paying down the debt is, is more important than having a beautiful new building, which would be beautiful, um.
We'll have it someday, but right now, it is more important to pay down the debt.
I, I think that's true. I think, that, that's my impression now. So, what that leads us to, though, is, this building is too small. This building needs to be, we need to do some work on the building. And, because there's no way we can handle a hundred more houses, we're busting at the seams now, um, so, the first part of this, this plan is, and I'll bring you the costs, uh, next meeting, but, um, I'm, I'm probably going to move ahead with it, because it's under, we have four thousand dollars set up for town hall improvements. Um, it should run somewhere between, uh, eight to ten right now. What we're going to do is, um, we're going to, we're going to close off the kitchen, we're going to redo the kitchen. We're going to extend the kitchen out onto the pad, we're going to, we're going to take this part, this, this colored porch, which is already there, we're going to enclose it. Basically, we're going to redo the kitchen, we're going to put a refrigerator in, going to actually put a real refrigerator in, put a bigger window, and we're going to wall it off from this side. So, the council chamber will not have a kitchen in it, we'll have to go through the doorway to get to the kitchen. That'll be an opening, that'll be a case open. Basically, we're not going to do a lot of cosmetic stuff, because nobody can see it. That, that wall is going to be extended, the whole thing's walled off. It's strictly to make it more functional, we need to have a pantry, because we, we have no space for any things. It's strictly to make it more functional. We need to have a pantry because we- we have no space or anything. And we need to- we need to get a new refrigerator. That one has been here as long as I've been here, and it's- it's- it's lived a long life. It needs to now-
It's got a refrigerator head?
Yeah, yeah, it needs to go away. Um, but, uh-
I think we're gonna repurpose that though. I think the public works department is-
It- it may end up down at the wastewater plant in our public works buildings. Um-
So the kitchen is gonna become this pad out here. That's gonna become the kitchen.
So that- that wall with the window in it, that window is now gonna go facing the playground.
The kitchen plus the pad is the kitchen?
Yeah, that's the new kitchen. And, um, we're gonna redo the plumbing underneath there to get the sink and everything squared away. The sink and hot water. We're gonna put in a dishwasher. I donated a dishwasher to the city.
The sink isn't centered on the opening of the cabinets today. There's a lot of oddities about that layout in there.
I mean, we're gonna- we're gonna redo it. I'm not looking for any input from anybody else, 'cause I don't wanna have seven different versions of cabinets. No. I'm handling it. I'm gonna do it my way, and it'll be done. Okay? Um, but that's- that's step one. So step one is that. Um, I think- I think the actual construction, all of that can be done for like about five thousand. Um, because it- it's pretty easy framing, and we're not making it pretty like on the other side. I don't care what the stucco looks like inside the kitchen. We don't care. Nobody can see it. Um, uh, it won't have- we're gonna probably put, uh, something a little bit better on the exterior.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the layout that- that you and I brainstormed on is reusing the openings and closing openings, so it's not like you have to get into major framing.
Right. So I- we don't wanna make it per-
The doorway that's there, you just take the door out, and that's the passway into the kitchen. And the door that's there, you move it to the new door. It's still the exterior door. You just move it to a new exterior wall.
So- so now you'd enter ninety degrees away from where you do now, right off the patio. Um, but again, if this was your house, we wouldn't be doing it this way. But this isn't your house. This is here, and nobody can see it. So we're not gonna spend two thousand dollars on new cabinets and stuff. No, we're not doing it.
But the layout would be more functional too for outside events and inside events, so.
So that's kind of the first phase. Um, the second phase is, um, gonna be more expensive, significantly more expensive, and that'll bring to you a lot, uh, better. But what that's gonna be is, we're gonna extend the back office about fifteen feet toward the playground. We're gonna extend it to the end of the mailboxes and create another office back there. So the mayor will have an office, and we will actually have a conference table, so we can have executive session without kicking everybody out to the curb. So there'll be a conference table and an office back there if we're gonna do it. So, um- Okay, um, and now we- right now, we have- we have- 'cause we have- we have to have the, uh, utility clerk is at the desk I've been using. Uh, Clint's doing a great job in re- repurposing and respacing back there for, um, Steve to give him space and cabinets and stuff for the building department. And, um, we just- we're busting at the seams with storage. We got- we need-